...meeting for November sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Roll call.
That, Elajie?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Sigh on. Here, Stukey?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Elajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Sigh on. Yes, Stukey?
Yes. One point three is there a motion to accept October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four spatial meeting minutes?
No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Elajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Sigh on. Yes, Stukey?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Elajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Sigh on. Yes, Stukey?
Yes. I don't believe anybody from Springfield Education tonight, unless you want to talk. Nobody there to talk. Certified, not classified, not publicly prearranged, right? And we won't have any public participation there, so we'll move into the work session. Who's interfacing?
Program update.
Yep.
Kelsey Morton, Tara Hunter. Well done.
We don't really have that many students. Okay, so I brought Tara with me because I thought, you know, she's the one living it every day and it's her building. So we're kind of going to talk about breakfast and how it's going. All right, so the first slide, I kind of just put some data so you guys can kind of see. So my goal number was a hundred. So you can see, obviously, we definitely met that in four. In August, our highest day was actually under fifty-seven, but we had some days that were lower. And so it kind of averages out to August, one thirty-three, September, one thirty. And then November has gone down a little bit, but still it's one twenty, and I think that's great. You can see like the total participation in the building there, about fourteen percent compared to lunch. So lunch is about fifty percent at Dennis, which is great. I put our current free reduced numbers there specifically at Dennis, so you can kind of see that. And then I also put, I wanted to see like if you have any free reduced qualified students are actually using the program versus not for breakfast. So it's about thirty-three percent of the kids that qualify. So, you know, and honestly, that would be more, but it's still healthy. And at lunch, the average free reduced percentage is sixty-six. You guys can kind of remember that. I just put in this sample breakfast menu, so this was for the first three months. We've added some more options that the kids have been requesting and wanting and kind of seeing what they really like. So we've added some more for November on. But we kind of wanted to just talk about like, what are we doing that works? So I'll let Tara talk a little bit and then I'll move on.
Sure. I just want to say I'm super excited about the breakfast program. Many of you may know that we kind of started our own kind of faux breakfast program a few years ago through our PTO and some community partnerships. Because we just noticed that some kids were really struggling in the morning time. I don't know about you, but you know, I'm this way, and so were several of our kids. We just were a little hangry and, you know, we're really kind of difficult in terms of starting our day. So now, when Springfield is more official breakfast program, we're just excited to be able to offer this opportunity to more students. In the beginning, it was more of a secret, like society breakfast program, just to be respectful because it was free. And, you know, we couldn't offer it to all nine hundred, you know, plus students. And so that presented some challenges too, because you had kids that were literally like, why do they get to go in there and have breakfast? And you wanted to be sensitive to that. So with this program, it's just really wonderful. But every day during lunch, we kind of give a commercial for what tomorrow's breakfast is going to be. And I'll be honest with you, it's just been a hoot as we've kind of designed this breakfast menu. I've never really had pancake on a stick. It's interesting, but it's really good and the kids love it. That's one of their faves. We also have breakfast pizza, and I think the kids, it didn't go well, but I will tell you, the cinnamon rolls are all different, like all of the rays right now. I had a student that was so excited, he told me, this is better than Cinnabon. So we'll give a little bit of a commercial every day. And I am excited. I get to eat, you know, I pay, I pay to eat breakfast in there as well. I try to taste every new menu item so that I can also kind of give my own positive spin on what they serve. I actually like the breakfast pizza that the kids did, so. I also send home little blurbs. I send out the blurbs, I should say, to our teachers and they put that in their newsletters as well. Like we just highlighted this past week, that our menu was changing and that there were some days. So I think, you know, just kind of front loading some of those things, whether it's in lunch or on the morning announcements or in our newsletters, I think it's been very, very effective. We have one assigned building person for breakfast. It's actually our counselor. And then our resource coordinators are also there to support. I'll be honest with you, we didn't know if we were going to have five hundred kids on the first day of school for breakfast or fifty. And we were a little anxious, but we've been able to work through the logistics as we live it and it hasn't been cumbersome at all. Kelsey did allow us to increase our food service hours.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, we had to start bringing people in earlier in order to do this. And we didn't really realize that we were going to have upwards of a hundred and fifty. So originally, I was just going to do like one line, just have one staff member, but we actually have two staff members running here right now. So we just couldn't get the kids in quick enough because we had so many and they all kind of come at one time. The majority of them, they'll finish the line, but we have like a big rush when they get off the bus. So, but I, you know, looked into everything, if we can support it and it's been really successful. I've got random emails, not like they were emailing me about something else, you know, oh, they put something on my kid's account, they can't have sweets. But we love the breakfast program, thank you so much, so. I've had, I've had a handful of parents that have said something, so that's good and kids too. Those are kind of the things that we wanted to point out, that, you know, that's what's working and in my opinion, to bring it to other schools.
Yeah.
That's really what you need. You need the principal and the staff on board to make it happen.
So can we better else than to kind of highlight our, I mean, why is this important or why is this necessary? So our first video is from Mrs. Wendell.
Talk to me a little bit about the benefits of our current breakfast program.
Sure. I think there are probably two of the biggest things that I have noticed that have been beneficial this, starting this program is, one, it's for everyone. And that is awesome, that all kids, parents can participate if they choose to. The other big benefit is that we have so many more options for kids. We have hot options and we didn't, we weren't able to do that in our other program. So that's really been nice to see, and the kids have really enjoyed that.
So Mrs. Wendell is the person who I have a friend in, you know, is very responsible.
Talk to me a little bit about the benefits.
Okay, and then here's a student.
Why do you like eating breakfast at school?
Because it has, like, there's multiple choices to choose from.
Lots of good food and multiple choices, thank you. And why do your parents let you have breakfast at school?
Because every morning when I get up, it takes too long to get ready for it, so they don't have no time to eat breakfast at home.
So your parents let you eat because it's more convenient to eat at school? What about you? Why do your parents let you eat breakfast at school?
Because I eat breakfast, but I show up after.
So you're a to-breakfast kind of girl. All right, thanks so much.
I was actually expecting to get more phone calls from parents that have kids eating breakfast twice, but I really haven't gotten these. So, the faves don't know, or Tara will have to. So really just kind of the next steps for breakfast, because I, you guys want to know that. I kind of reached out to the principals to say, you know, it's going well, food is actually interested, like food's ready to start this. Because like as you can see, if the principal's on board and they want it to happen, it's going to be successful. So I spoke with Five Points Elementary and we actually set a December second start date. And that should flow, I mean, there's like copy and paste from Dennis, there really shouldn't be, you know, much logistics with that. And then Springfield Intermediate is super eager to start there. We're going to maybe try through January, theirs is a little tricky. I don't know if you guys have ever been in the intermediate school kitchen, but there's no storage and it's just, it's something. So we're trying to work through how could you store more or like use, like our delivery guy to bring it and set that sort of thing. And then also neither of the staff members can come in that early, so I'm posting a position for two hours so that they would just do breakfast from like start to finish. So hopefully, we can get all that going by January. And then after that, you don't really know the next steps. That's, that's it for now. And then, you know, hopefully the other schools will, you know, see it being implemented in the other buildings and do well and want to try it there. So that's all we had for breakfast. You guys have any questions or anything?
Just real quick, how, how much have you communicated to parents in terms of this option? Have you kind of kept it down low or are we really?
I mean, who's communicating? Dennis. Yeah. In the, I think I started running it maybe two weeks before the start of the school year. And that would be my suggestion for Five Points and Springfield Intermediate as well. You know, maybe a few weeks prior to, just to, you know, really make parents aware of it. And for the secondary parents, I can imagine that's going to be, you know, a big plus for them too, because they get up so early. So mom doesn't have to make it exit four thirty, so. But yeah, I feel like we communicated it well. I think it's very well known, like I said, with our other program, we did have to kind of hide that a little bit more and that felt awkward. Trying to explain to like your family why we work and allow your kids to come into each other.
Yeah, and now that we're going to be rolling it out, you know, we could probably start doing more district-wide communication, but we didn't want to, you know, do too much communication and people will be like, well, I wonder if my building break out. And, you know, we had to make sure that it was going to be successful, so.
So how does it work, like logistically, we don't tell them like they still go to the gym or whatever, they don't wait?
Yes.
If they want to go to breakfast, we just say?
Like exactly what you just said. So our students come off of the buses, the bus, bus drivers are like, they graciously allow anyone that wants breakfast to come off of the bus a few minutes earlier. They shuffle into the cafeteria, especially those buses that kind of get there parked substantially earlier than the rest of our fleet. And then as our later arriving buses park, all the students get off and they have the option to either go into the cafeteria or go straight to class. We do still have our kind of early morning holding area in, in the gym. So kids that do get off relatively earlier, whether they're a bus or a car rider, can go in, have breakfast, and then they go wait in the gym until they're dismissed of classes.
How much time is it, like, best prior to school starting?
Great question. So our students can start arriving for breakfast roughly around eight fifteen, because that's our early morning drop-off time. Most students trickle in somewhere about twenty minutes prior to the start of our school day, which is why having that additional, you know, worker in the cafeteria was, was really beneficial because our line was really long. So being able to utilize both of those, you know, kind of cashiers was, was very helpful, very helpful. Because I did start to get a little principal anxiety after like one fifty-seven that day.
Give a sense of maybe why the percentage of free and reduced lunch by utilizing the breakfast program is, is half of what is utilizing the lunch? I'm just curious, like why there, I wouldn't expect there to be such a discrepancy.
I know, I, I was wondering that too, and I was, I was like, maybe we should be targeting, because until I pulled this presentation together, I didn't really realize like, oh, that's kind of the big difference. But I mean, if you look, only fourteen kids are eating breakfast, where at lunch is fifty-two percent, so maybe their parents just don't want to do it.
Either that or it could be just an unawareness of not only is my lunch free, but my breakfast is free too.
I have gotten a lot of questions, like they could only get one or the other.
So I'm wondering if there's some things like that that can just be integrated into the communication and maybe ensure that people understand it, applies to them.
Absolutely, and maybe I can do like a marketing school update, like the one of those, did you know? You know, I mean, we do communicate it.
Yeah.
Have you seen any improvement for kids who might be late to school, getting to school on time to have breakfast?
Yes, I would say in some cases, yes. There is still a population, I, I won't talk about that just because we're on camera right now probably, but there is a population of students that, you know, do kind of arrive later. But we still allow them to have breakfast. We've gotten a system in place where as long as they're in the door on time, we don't mark them tardy, but we do hurry them along so that they are not missing a lot of instruction.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah. So really, I'm very thankful, very thankful for the opportunity to have been able to pilot.
All right, thank you.
We have like three quick slides that I, that I have to do every year for. So the next two slides basically just, we, like, we have to report this every year to this date. Actually, I'm actually working on it right now, putting in the compliance. And basically, we just have to say that we did a presentation to the board, letting you guys know that we are compliant in all food and beverages that are sold on school grounds. So there's stipulations, if it's midnight the night before through the school day and then thirty minutes after school, it has to be within all the regulations. So we were good there. And I presented in the morning tonight, so we're good there. I just put some lunch numbers up here so that you guys can kind of go. We stayed pretty steady. The only really difference is, is the junior high and Five Points, we had a little increase last school year. And then the free and reduced percentage went way up last school year due to the state allowing Medicaid for drug certification. So I think it went from like seven point nine percent to thirteen point nine percent. So that was like a two-year thing and I feel like they're just like, keep like that. So you can kind of see that. And then just some stuff that I've been doing with the department. We increased our salaries to be more competitive with the districts around us. Implement a cycle menu so that it's easier for the families to kind of know what to expect as well as the staff. I have started purchasing some new cooking equipment for better food quality. I hired a speaker at our back-to-school meeting this year to speak with all the staff about proper cooking methods with school food, because it's very different than what you cook at home. Lots of whole grains and like lower fat and stuff like that, so that was really good. We have an administrative review this year by the state that's supposed to be every three years, and it's been like seven years due to COVID and then getting behind. So that's coming up. And then we're getting even more strict nutritional standards coming down the pipeline in two thousand twenty-seven with like added sugar and sodium. And then where, where you can purchase things from, so whether it was like made in the United States or not. Oh, yeah, Domino's, we started Domino's, huge hit.
Okay. Three point three, urgent necessity, Scott Gilbert, this sounds expensive.
Yes. For president, members of the board, we were recently doing some boiler inspections and as part of that process, Clear Creek, first of all, we have a nineteen ninety-two and a nineteen ninety-seven boiler in that building. Typical lifespan of those, between twenty and twenty-four years. These are water-coiled boilers, so we've gotten a lot of life out of the existing. The nineteen ninety-seven boiler is the one that we found the major issue with. And after looking and reviewing various options with that, such as repairs and things of that nature, we determined that the best option in order to keep us in school during the cold and winter months is to actually replace the boiler with a new, more efficient boiler, that will be a heat exchanger style boiler. So we no longer have any water systems in place. Now, as part of this process, we will maintain the nineteen ninety-two boiler as a backup. We will have redundancy in the new boiler, but we will retain the nineteen ninety-seven boiler in the building for use and be using it periodically. But this was urgent, we thought, because of the time of the year, we needed to really move on it fast. We're hoping to get the boiler delivered within the next week or two and get the install started, maybe even over Thanksgiving break before the winter weather really hits us and we get into colder temperatures. So right now, we do have, again, the boiler that's there, nineteen ninety-seven is functional and operational, heating the building to a point. But if we really get into cold and real cold temperatures, it would really not sustain itself. So we came to you this evening with this urgent necessity to buy a new reload boiler, not to provide us the opportunity again to keep the building operational. So with that, questions? Okay. And on the next as well.
I guess one, one quick question, just to say hypothetically, we're no longer in that building. I don't know, like, if we still be repurposed or sold or some of those costs?
It's a great question, Jamie, yes. Surely, we could repurpose it, yes. So if it ever be a situation where for some reason, you know, Clear Creek would not be within our ownership or for some reason not be there, we would definitely try to do that the best we possibly can. We do know of some locations we could put it if we needed to, so, yeah, it would get by, so. Okay, all right. And then safety committee, we did meet as a safety committee and basically we reviewed, you know, the various improvements we've done within the district from the safety and security enhancements that we've done. We also talked about, there's a new pendant law for staff wearing a pendant for emergency communications that is still pending, I believe, in legislation. But if that comes to fruition, they would expect it as of right now for every staff member to have some type of a pendant for emergency communications on their body by, I think it was August of two thousand twenty-five. That would be a massive undertaking, first of all, but secondly, you know, these pendants are not cheap. In my research, they're about two to three hundred dollars per staff member. So you're talking a large chunk of money. And right now, I have not heard anything about a grant coming through to help support school districts to purchase these. So we're still investigating and looking into it. We're not going to stop that, we're going to try to be ready to go when we are. A lot of the pendants are proprietary in nature, attached to a specific vendor, so we're looking at that as well right now. So, you know, we're just keeping our options open and still evaluating that, but we wanted the safety committee to be aware that we weren't dropping the ball, we weren't looking at that opportunity, so. So a lot of good conversation around that. I think everybody was complimentary of our staff and how our staff handles the fire drills and the emergency drills that we have. So, you know, overall, a very positive meeting.
One more question? Good.
The policy committee held on all week, the board members took us apart for three hours. I mean, you were there to review the large, I'll review of thirty-nine policies that you all have in your possession and we'll discuss them shortly under my section. It was a long policy committee, but due to various laws like Senate Bill twenty-nine, House Bill two fifty, House Bill one twenty-seven, just lots of policies that we had to put into effect and discuss and do a first reading coming today. My section, we'll discuss that.
And then we did have a budget finance committee last Friday. The group received an update from the W C superintendent on enrollment, birth rates and the artistic graphics and how it's changed over time. We also received an update from the particular department, technology and operations, on just all the things that are happening in their areas and the financial implications for what's going on in their areas. And then I also did a forecast presentation like I did at the board meeting. So our next meeting is February twenty-eighth.
Any others, is that it? Any other business to talk about? All right, moving on to treasures report.
ID four point one is the approval of the actual financials. I will also include in my upcoming board update to you that monthly board report that I'm creating as well as a separate document. And we have obviously the financials that are on, on your review. Just a couple of highlights, we received just under one point six million in revenue. So obviously, our revenue is quite, quite slowed down and it will again until around January, end of January, early February, when we start receiving tax advances. Of that one point six million, one point three million was state funding. We did receive a rollback in homestead credits from Montgomery County. We did not receive Warren County, which we typically do in the end of October, so that's been pushed out until November, so we'll see that this month. And then a hundred eighty-three thousand in this one is riding to mainly due to participating fees and school fees. And our expenses, everything is on target and our expenses based off of the forecast that I gave you at the last meeting. You will see a slight increase for October for salaries and that, too, that was a hundred and one thousand extra dollars than our typical, as due to the supplement for the first half of fall sports. When we closed October, we had eighty-seven point nine days of operating cash on hand. So those are the financials. ID four point two is the approval of the five-year mortgage that I gave you at the last meeting.
Yep, exactly. Is there a motion to accept four point one, four point two? Further discussion? Roll call.
Elajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
So how, yes, Stukey?
Abstain?
ID four point four is the approval of a nation of one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from the community to the county to the county.
Is there a motion to accept four point four? No move. Roll call.
Elajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Sigh on. Yes, Stukey?
Yes. Superintendent's report assessment.
Yes, five point one is the first reading of thirty-nine policies. And in the attachments, just give the cheat sheet that we sent along. And then Tara just recently, this afternoon, gave you a separate one about the Edgar policies that was not on there for you to read through. But like I said, these are all mainly about Senate Bill twenty-nine, which is the Student Data Privacy Act that we've had to put in place. Senate Bill two fifty was the cell phone policy. And then, or that's House Bill two fifty. And then there was House Bill one forty-seven about student transfers, duty pooling. There is a House Bill on attendance. So all of these are in line with laws that we now need to follow and you all wanted us to be obviously in compliance with those laws. There's a lot of word spitting because as you know, technology is ever evolving and with AI, we needed to update our policies to reflect AI in academic honesty. We needed to get rid of words like blue boxes and pagers, which are probably no longer used anymore. So there's a lot of that that was done, but please read through and then if you have specific questions about policies, it's going to be easier for me to answer those than to go through each and every one. And then Tara had a number of treasurer policies that also maybe you have questions about.
Right, and most of them were included in the policy that they gave up here sheet here. The ones that weren't at the bottom of the sheet that's already on there was, was the Edgar policies. And those are administrative policies from the Department of Education, the US Department of Education, and those have different requirements. So I think that's why the separate documents I presented for the Edgar policies. These are all involved in the federal requirements that have. laws to include those, these are requirements that have been included here too. So those are also for a review. So we will have second reading of this.
No questions, huh?
Do you want, do you have questions now?
On the roll, we want, yeah, just.
Well, you want to transfer, do you transfer?
What about athletics? Except they could be eligible to participate in the other schools.
No, that one is, remember, they, they'll attend if they were fully in, in their athletic sport, then they would try to go to our team in the way. But that would have to be the superintendent's and that would have to be in agreement.
Okay. Same thing vice versa. Okay. Moving on, Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I've come before you tonight with our personnel report. So while it's rather brief, we certainly want to recognize Deb Cuddy, one of our aforementioned specialists at Dennis Elementary. She served almost 20 years in the district and she's retiring in the school year and we're certainly grateful for her service.
Excuse me. Is there a motion to accept 6.1? Roll call.
Palage.
Yes.
Good. So how, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Item 6.2, I come before you guys tonight to seek approval for our athletic report. While brief, we have some checks and balances in place and our Treasurers Department worked with my department to correct some steps that you'll see on here for some of our supplementals. It's the bulk of this.
Is there a motion to accept 6.2? No move. Roll call.
Palage.
Yes.
Good. So how, yes, sticky?
Abstain. Urgent Necessity.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, we've come to you to ask for your approval of the urgent necessity to purchase a boiler for Clear Creek Elementary.
Is there a motion to accept 7.1? Further discussion? Roll call.
Palage.
Yes.
Good. So how, yes, sticky?
Yes. 8.1, announcements and future considerations, anything else?
Just, I would like to announce that our girls, our division, our girls soccer team division when soccer turned up this weekend at the historic Cruz Stadium, the new Cruz Stadium, and that's on Saturday. So those are soccer.
All right. Nothing else, sir? Set up comments?
I just wanted to say hello to the girls soccer team. The ball plays in their next playoff game this weekend. And we think boys soccer team are a great season. Congratulations to all the, all of the kids and all the athletics fans on their season. I think they have another competition coming up this weekend. It'll be Saturday, I think it is. I'll have to check the website. I think it is Saturday. And then I know that there's a play in a couple of weeks for the high school students. But definitely, I also am a committed this morning as a sponsor. I think it's awesome that we're, the pilot was so successful. I assumed that it would be. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it works out for the other two buildings, Five Points and us. Thanks for the donation.
You covered it all.
Yes.
Now I, I do very, very well. Now that it's great here that we're expanding the breakfast program, I appreciate the hesitation. Yeah, just thanks to the donation this evening. And good luck to all of our students that are still competing in a variety of different, different events. So good luck to them as they continue their respective seasons.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. I think, you know, nothing else would kind of jumped out to me. What a great example of the pilot program, you know, where we tried it in one building and kind of took some time to study the results. And in this case, it was successful. And, you know, if it hadn't been successful, no problem. I think it's important for us to do those things, especially when there's potential benefits for students. So again, I'm sure my fellow board members enthusiasm for the program. And I think as we expand, it's going to be a good thing for, for everybody. So great job there.
Just a rehash for everybody else. Glad the pilot program's taking off. See how well it goes for the next two programs, our two schools. Thanks for the donation, robotics. It's quite a, quite a bit of money there. So that's nice. And then good luck to football team and girls soccer team. Getting close to moving into winter sports, a little bit warmer. All right. 9.1, is there a motion to move into executive session for the purchase of property for the public purposes or the sale of property at a competitive bidding?
Palage.
Yes.
Yes. So how, yes.